You need us right there.
Mm-hmm.
What did you retire from?
Wonderful Power Administration.
Oh, okay. So he has been working then, no?
You're live, Commissioners. You're live.
Oh. (laughing).
Good morning, all. We're just so talky today. I will now call to order the November 30th, 2023 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. County Council, Stephen Madcor. Clerk to the Board, Tony Maranick. Commissioner Schrader is not here today. She's attending a National Association of Counties event. Roll call. Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you have joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be used in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you introduce the first item, please?
Yes, Chair Smith. First is the Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Elected officials, Item One, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Transportation and Development, Item One, approval to accept a permanent easement from the Oregon Department of Transportation and accept a permanent right-of-way easement for road purposes from the Clackamas County Development Agency. No fiscal impact. No county general funds are involved. Item Two, approval of a personal services contract with Carl Douglas Cox for code and compliance hearings officer services. Total value is $600,000 for six years. Funding is through permitting revenue, solid waste, franchise fees, and fees for service. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services, Item One, approval of revenue intergovernmental grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for the Senior Medicare Patrol Grant for Medicare Consumer Education. Agreement value is $18,500 for one year. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and $1,605 in budgeted county general funds. Item Two, approval of Amendment Number Two to a fixed-price revenue sub-agreement from Oregon State University for Parenting Education Program. Amendment value is $93,311 for one year. Agreement value is increased to $215,851 for three years. Funding is through the Oregon State University. No county general funds are involved. Item Three, approval of revenue sub-agreement with the Oregon State University for Parenting Education Programming. Agreement value is $176,063 for one year. Funding is through Oregon State University. No county general funds are involved. Item Four, approval of Amendment Number Six, increasing funding and term of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas Fire District Number One for ambulance services. Amendment value is $147,408.89 for one year. Agreement value is increased to $3,575,499.96 over 10.67 years. Funding through cost-saving program with American Medical Response Northwest. No county general funds are involved. Item Five, approval of Amendment Number Five, increasing funding, extending the term, and updating program language of an intergovernmental revenue agreement with Oregon Health and Science University for the Oregon Care Coordination Program. Amendment value is $74,977 for one year. Agreement value is increased to $474,095 for 5.2 years. Funding is through Oregon Health Science University Grant Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item Six, approval of Amendment Number One, increasing funding and extending the term of a revenue grant agreement from the Oregon Department of Early Learning and Care for continuation of coordinated enrollment services for families eligible for publicly funded preschool programs. Amendment value is $173,980 for one year. Agreement value is increased to $564,480 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Early Learning and Care. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from the Consent Agenda?
Chair, in lieu of removing everything from the Consent Agenda, I will just make a comment. We're approaching 10 years now since the beginning of what became MFR, which was a strategic plan. And I had fought pretty hard back then to get a strategic plan so that we could have metrics in which to monitor, make sure that public dollars are spent as wisely as possible. And we spend a lot of time on the Consent Agenda. You just heard the reading of the Consent Agenda. We spend a lot of time, or a majority of our time, on Tuesdays going over the Consent Agenda. But yet, no metrics at hand, no dashboard, none of the things that were basically, say, promised, but we were told that they would be forthcoming. There are some metrics that were established that are not accessible when we're approving all of this, and we assume that our staff are using some of those, and this is not in any way a reflection on the work of our staff. It's really our ability to make sure that when we endeavor into a significant project like the Strategic Plan, MFR, which was millions of dollars in consultant fees and staff time, millions of dollars, that today, 10 years later, we don't have much to show for it, and we don't use that tool in our meetings, whether it's Tuesdays or it's today. That's my comment. Chair.
Thank you very much. No Commissioner can remove everything from the Consent Agenda.
And I didn't.
Without moving it forward. It's just a clarification for the people listening think that that can happen. It cannot happen. I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Oh, second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved approval of the Consent Agenda, and Commissioner West has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Thank you very much. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Clackamas County Development Agency Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
Next is the Consent Agenda for the Clackamas County Development Agency. Tony, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Development Agency Consent Agenda, two items. Item One, approval to grant a permanent right-of-way easement for road purposes from the Clackamas County Development Agency to Clackamas County, and grant a quick claim deed from Clackamas County Development Agency to the State of Oregon Military Department. No fiscal impact. No county general funds are involved. Item Two, approval of a contract amendment number one with Elder Demo LLC for demolition of the former Miles Fiberglass Building. Amendment value is $407,534. Contract value is increased to $673,427. Funding is through Clackamas Town Center Urban Renewal Plan Area. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Tony. Does any Commissioner, excuse me, any Director wish to remove any item from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Second.
Director West has moved we approve the Development Agency Consent Agenda, and Director Scholl has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Tony, would you please take the poll?
Director Savis.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as the Development Agency Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Next is Public Communication, Chair Smith.
Oh, that was fast. Holy moly.[608.79][608.79](laughing). We're going to get to Public Communication right now for our crowd to come up. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as a BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon by statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at publiccommunication@bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony and take in-person testimony first. I have a blue card here from Elvis Clark. Please come forward, state your name and your area of residence.
Hello, I'm Elvis Clark. I live in Milwaukee, Oregon, in Clackamas County. Dear Chair and Commissioners, I and many of the natural gas home heating customers may need your help. I sent you written testimony about this. About a year ago, the city of Milwaukee passed a resolution to begin banning natural gas utility service in the city. They hit a roadblock because the federal court said that that violated federal law, a law back in the '70s that wanted to maintain fuel choice for people because of shortages that had occurred because of regulation in the northeast part of the U.S. So I heard on November 7th, listening to the work session of the Milwaukee City Council, that they have an idea of trying to get the county public health department to declare or make a statement or some kind of support for saying that natural gas is a public health risk. This was Chair Counselor Stavon George, and she is on your Public Health Advisory Committee. I need the county to try and resist this in Milwaukee Council's backdoor way of restricting natural gas utility service, and so I hope you watch out for this coming down the pike if it does come down. I think it will, because they were pretty, they're looking for ways to enforce that or go with that ban. And the fact is, natural gas home heating, if you do the mathematics, it's pretty simple. It's about a third of the cost of heating your home with electricity in a electric resistance furnace, but, you know, heat pumps can get maybe down to 10 cents. But for Northwest Natural Gas, you look at the schedule and convert it to equivalent kilowatt hour of heat, it's about 4 and 3/4 cents per kilowatt hour. And now PGE is going to raise their rates, 17 percent, and while Northwest Natural drops at 8 percent. And so affordability, the people will be forced to use propane heaters, indoor portable propane heaters, or wood, more wood burning, and this is supposed to, banning natural gas is supposed to improve the environment. So I need some support from the county commission possibly to help stave off this other attempt.
Thank you for bringing that forward. I know Commissioner West wants to mention it. I noticed at By Mart recently something I had not seen before, and that was portable propane heaters that you can put inside your home.
Mm-hmm.
And I thought, man, we never used to be able to do that before.
Yeah.
And obviously, there must be a need for that. Commissioner West.
Elvis, what was the name of that individual on the Public Health Advisory Committee that you mentioned?
Counselor Rebecca Stavon George.
Stavon George, yeah.
I think she's on the Public Health Advisory Committee because she mentioned it in the work session on November 7th, and so.
Well, Elvis, sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, that's okay.
She may not be paying attention or aware, but Counselor Stavengard should know that we made a very firm stance for energy choice in this county and opposed former mayor.
Gamba.
Gamba, thank you, Mark Gamba's effort in the legislature to try to take away people's choice of the type of energy that they want and to really take a targeted effort towards natural gas, which is relatively clean, cheap, and affordable.
Oh, yeah.
And their efforts does nothing but make housing more expensive. It affects the livability of the people in Clackamas County, and it has zero impact in Oregon whatsoever on any effort for climate change or greenhouse gases. It's quite ideological, and it's effort, and it's not based on anything that's, it's not based on anything that's evidence-focused or data-focused, that's quality that actually helps improves the local lives of residents. So we put forward a letter to that legislature and helped kill legislation that was in that I doubt that, I know at least, I'll speak for myself as a Commissioner, that Counselor Stavon George's efforts to try to get me to move on this issue, to make this some type of public health crisis, which would actually distract from real efforts that we're doing to tackle real public health crises like homelessness, addiction, and mental health disorders that are flooding our streets. I don't think that natural gas banning that is high on our list.
Yeah.
Or will be. So she has every right to come and try to do that or any others, but I think this board has been very clear in its support for energy choice, but you are right, we need to be aware of these situations and continue to stand up for that when issues like this arise. So this is a very good issue that you brought before us. Thank you.
Oh, that's awesome words to hear. I'm, it's very thankful.
Yeah, we took a vote. I believe we took a vote. Did we write a resolution or not?
Well, we talked about that. I actually, Commissioner Scholl, didn't I?
On one.
You just brought this issue up.
Yeah, on one March 2023, the board signed a letter to the state legislature supporting the use of natural gas and other forms of energy.
Yeah.
The board does not want to see the people, the families, or the businesses of Clackamas County put in a situation where they are not able to economically run their homes or businesses.
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I make my comments not particularly towards any jurisdiction or person elected or otherwise, but more in the guise of public safety or health, if you will, in this case. So the, I certainly understand the argument that if someone has a gas stove and they turn light the gas stove, you know, there are, you know, there's naturally going to be some emissions that come off that. And it seems to me that, you know, a practical safety method would be to, and there are technologies out there, by the way, to require and have technology that would trigger ventilation fan to draft those fumes, those toxic fumes, as well as the cooking fumes as well, outside the building. That's the practical way of approaching this.
Yeah.
We, you know, certainly in the last couple of days, we know that, you know, it got down below freezing and heat sometimes, or electric choices, you know, people are struggling to pay their bills, you know, there's power outages, there's people that have their utilities cut off. You know, electricity is one of the more common ones that's cut off than natural gas or water and so on. But people still need to dry their clothes, they still need to heat their homes, and heat their water, a lot of water heaters, and there's some efficiency with that. Granted, you know, it's a fossil fuel or a byproduct of fossil fuel, essentially. We acknowledge that, but I also hear the arguments about public health when it relates to, when it comes to fumes and toxins and so forth, that, you know, vehicle emissions are a big contributor towards public health and so forth. And the irony of all this is that while a lot of people, some of the same people, whether it's in this Oregon or here in the metro region, or it's here across the country, argue that, you know, we should, you know, take transit, take other alternatives because these cars and trucks are polluting our local streets and school buses and all that, and the, you know, the waste haulers who pull up in front of your house, you know, and so forth. And they, those private industries have actually gone towards cleaner fuels, by the way. My point is this, is that, you know, it has grown into this anti-lane, so whereby we believe that if we stop building lanes, people stop driving cars. We don't put in the alternatives for transit so people can get back and forth to work. And frankly, you know, we're learning that tens of thousands of cars in the Portland metro region, I'll repeat that, tens of thousands of cars every day are being, are diverting off the freeway because it's congestion, because of, because of lack of capacity. And you know what? All those toxic fumes are going onto local streets and into local neighborhoods where people live every day. So I say that the impacts of those local emissions into our, into our local communities is far greater than that of those who burn on a gas stove with ventilation.
Yeah, I also find that a lot of the natural gas stoves are actually higher-income people that are into their cooking thing, and these people are intelligent enough to make their own decisions on this, their fuel choice, on this cooking choice, I think. Anyways, that's just me. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Up next, I have a blue card for Les Poole. Please come forward, state your name and your area of residence. Welcome.
Good morning, Les Poole. I live in the incorporated part of the county. I'm also a former heating and cooling contractor and love to have discussion with you folks sometime at a work session about heat pumps, natural gas, my experience, and I didn't come to talk about that, but I appreciate that Mr. Clark brought it up, and I certainly appreciate your responses. And frankly, Mr. Gamba is a promoter of a political agenda more than anything. And if he'd like to come down here and do like the rest of us and present his positions, I'm sure he's welcome. We haven't seen him here since he tried to shake the county down, or I should say the Parks District, for the millions, for the park at the waterfront in Milwaukee. And of course, since that time, I understand Milwaukee now wants to get out of the Parks District. So my trust for Mr. Gamba and those that are promoting this agenda is very low, and I think I'm speaking for a vast majority of folks. Well, I've used up one of my three minutes already. I better get started. A couple of things. One is I'm getting a lot of encouragement to run for the commission. I've participated in hundreds of meetings, and recently I submitted a records request from Tony, the clerk to the board, for how many times I've been here. And it's going to require a lot of work. It's going to cost $250. Is there anyone else that showed up as many times as I have, or that would cost $250 to find out what their participation was? And it's not about the $250. What I'm really saying is I'm here all the time. I'm here with a consistent message, and I'm going to make up my mind whether or not I'll be running in the next 10 days. Folks that wait until February and put their name on the ballot aren't serious. I can assure you, I am. And unlike some folks that have run for this office, I know that, I know where the restrooms are. I know the building. I understand policy. And by all means, we've got folks that sometimes decide they're going to run for, run for this office, they've never even been to a board meeting. So we're at a critical time, and I certainly like the direction the board is going, or I wouldn't even be considering this. So I'll let you folks all know and the public know here in the real, real near future. I want to conclude with a couple of comments about the filtration plant that's being planned on the county line, and that is, of course, a city of Portland Bull Run Water Project, and the cost and the practicality and the location of it are obviously.
Go ahead and continue, please.
What's in question. And I would encourage folks to stay after that issue, and I appreciate the work that the county's done. I realize that it's, this project's right on the county line, but it's got a lot of shortcomings, and a decision will be rendered soon, and whether it's approved or not by the Multnomah County Hearings Officer, you can bet that the decision will be appealed. And this, this project has got some holes in it, as I think you all know, so let's just keep that on, on our minds for the future. And I, as always, appreciate the opportunity to speak, and maybe one of these days I'll be joining you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? I see no one else. Tony, who's online?
Do not have anyone at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay. Well, that is the end of our public communication, and I will close this portion and move on. Gary, what's next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to share the good work of our county employees during my time. Today, I want to recognize staff from our County Dog Services Division. Did you know we have a dog services division? You do, Commissioners. We received notes of recognition for two employees, Starla Stevens and Trish Kraft. And a resident wrote this. "Thank you to dog service employees Starla and Trish for speaking with me about a bite wound that my dog Ben got from a neighbor's dog. Their advice was to take him to the vet if any swelling appeared. Was so helpful. My vet said Ben would have been much worse if I hadn't brought him in when I did, as he ended up needing surgery. Thank you so much for helping my dog. I greatly appreciate you." So thank you, Starla and Trish, of our Dog Services Division of Transportation and Development. Next, our Water Environment Services Coordinator, Gail Shalom, received an award from the Clackamas River Basin Council, and it is the Cole Garnier Stewardship Award. This award is honoring Gail for her outstanding stewardship efforts in the Clackamas watershed. And the organization said about Gail, "Gail is the council's benchmark for hands-on stewardship of our beloved watershed. Whether waiting in a stream or streaming online, her unfailing devotion routinely results in success." Congratulations to Gail at Water Environment Services. That is my recognition today. Thank you, Commissioners. Back to you, Chair Smith.
Thank you very much, Gary. We will now move on to Commissioner Communication. First is Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, well, first of all, before I forget, I do want to make an announcement that what was previously scheduled to be a Clackamas County discussion with the Oregon Joint Transportation Subcommittee that was recently formed, that was scheduled to be again on Saturday, it's been replaced by two meetings, and one of them is at 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Portland Community College Campus at 705 North Killingsworth Street, focused on the I-5 Rose Quarter Project. At 4:00 p.m. on the same day, December 2nd, this coming Saturday, at 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Portland Community College Southeast Campus at 2305 Southeast 82nd Avenue, will be focused on the I-205 portion going through East Portland. So actually, technically, that touches this, the Happy Valley, Sunnyside area and north. So I would encourage people to, here's your opportunity. Not very many people in the room, and probably not very many people online, but maybe someone watching this. Hopefully, we'll watch between now and Saturday, have an opportunity to, to go out there and testify. I encourage my colleagues to be there. There'll be three minutes for invited speakers, none of which of us here are invited, and the not invited can sign up like 30 minutes before, online or in person, and have two minutes to speak. I encourage all of you to be there, all of my colleagues. I think it would be a great opportunity and a great showing that Clackamas County is not only on top of this, not only has done their homework, but we're here to show our, a unified voice on this. So you've got the addresses. I know our staff, Public and Government Affairs are trying to broadcast that. I, it's a shame that we didn't have two or three weeks' notice about these changes and the address, so that's recent, and we still don't know where the Clackamas County, when and where the Clackamas County discussion will be. That'll cover the Gladstone, Oregon City, Westland, Lake Oswego, I-205 Quarter Communities, Borland, Stafford, all that. So we're still awaiting that. That is, hopefully, one of us will be invited to speak at that, and will be able to speak. But again, it was originally to be, the Subcommittee Group was originally to be local voices to work towards solutions and bring up issues, and to have it cut to three minutes for an invited guest, which are limited, and two minutes for the public is not really the form or the format, I, which I don't think is going to do much in the way of identifying all the problems. So we're going to have to work on submitting written testimony, detailed written testimony to make our points, and I certainly hope that our legislators, who are the decision-makers, choose to thoroughly read the materials and. read the materials and hear what we have learned, unlike the other areas in the region that have not done the work, only because they have not had the opportunity or the material. The focus has been on the 205 corridor. The focus has been in Clackamas County. We are at the epicenter of this tolling issue, and we need to be all over it. So that's my notice there. I want to also remind everyone, and my colleagues, of course, they already know, so I'm really not reminding them, that one of our top priorities in the county is the I-205 project, which is really the bridge, which is under construction today, and the remaining six point some odd miles of that corridor that goes up to the Stafford exit, which is a bottleneck, which is predominantly, outside of that is three lanes, but bottleneck's down to two lanes each way. That is causing a diversion. That is causing 50,000 to 80,000 trips on a business day per day off the freeway into our local roads, onto our local roads, and into our local communities, as I had mentioned earlier. And I will repeat this over and over again, not to mention what's being diverted off other parts of the corridors when they start adding tolling. When they add tolling, that number will increase, not only increase along the 205 corridor, but will increase everywhere where tolling is implemented. But I bring that up to say that's one of our top priorities is getting the lanes, which will reduce some of that congestion, which will reduce some of that diversion, will increase safety, and frankly, will increase or decrease CO2 emissions, which the state constantly says is a high priority. So public safety, you'll hear the three pillars from ODOT. You know, two of those pillars are safety and climate. So if they're true to the core, they would, number one, get this project back on track. And this board has taken a position. I think it's fair to say that all five of us, including myself, obviously, are not in favor of ODOT's tolling proposal. I think that's the fairest statement I can make, and that's a statement I've been making for a long time. However, due to inflation and due to the high spike in cost for capital construction, whether it's a courthouse, or a road, or a building, or a freeway, or whatever it may be, bridges, the cost has spiked. We need to come up with a funding solution or some direction to the state legislature on what alternative, what alternative funding mechanisms we ask them to look at or consider to get this project back on track. It has been canceled. The bridge construction will be completed, but the remaining project, the remaining almost seven miles will not, that bottleneck will continue to be there unless this board takes, frankly, a stronger position and more activity, not just words, but more activity towards, working towards a means to fund it and a means to advocate it for the state legislature. So I wish we were in a stronger position. We're not state legislators. We don't make those calls. But I think we find ourselves in a little bit of a conundrum after supporting the project, which, no harm there in supporting the project, but it turned into tolling. And then, you know, subsequent bills that came out, like 3055, really cemented the issue of tolling in such a way that we are now in this predicament where we green-lighted the project, and now the project is being canceled for lack of funding. And it's, it is a conundrum of sorts. So I just, again, I urge the chair to schedule a work session as soon as possible to talk about, number one, our number one, or not our number one, but our top priority, top priorities, and one of those being on the I-205 project, and looking for funding alternatives to suggest as we enter the next 2024 legislative session. Those are my comments for today, Chair.
Gary, how is that, how's staff doing on that? We haven't scheduled it because staff hasn't said they're ready to present yet, correct?
Correct. Staff is preparing all the funding options available at the state level, and as soon as that's done, we'll have it ready for scheduling for you.
That's, it's really not up to me. It's up to staff presenting the materials. Paul, have you reached out to staff to make sure you get everything you want on that?
Well, I think they are, and I've mentioned this to them, I think they're under the belief that, you know, we need to resurrect a lot of options, maybe, that are, they're going to spend a lot of time on. I don't think they're necessarily going to be very valuable for looking at, looking at funding alternatives that are beyond reach at this point in time. I think the need is more urgent, and I think there are some funding tools. I don't think we necessarily have to invent them. I just think we need to be able to say, we suggest or support that they look at some of the practical means, and that's not a great grand list. But I don't really think, frankly, that the effort that staff is making, all due respect, they're great, smart people, love them dearly, but I think they might be trying to put something far more complicated and comprehensive forward than we will actually be able to use. So I think we can simplify that. I don't really think that much work needs to be done. I don't think we need to do the math for ODOT, or we don't need to do the math for our state legislators. They don't seem to really want to listen to us anyhow. But I think a clear signal, and by the way, we have testimony we could submit at these two events here this weekend. We have testimony we could submit before the Oregon Transportation Committee meeting, which comes up in a week and a half or so. And I think having something in our hand is better than having nothing, other than to say, just dig our heels and say, no, not this, but, you know, we still want the project, but no means to pay for it. I think we've got to take the leadership responsibility, I think, of some sort, to at least give some guidance of what we would support a study or evaluate.
Commissioner West.
Can I, I have questions on this topic that you brought up, if that's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
When we look at alternative funding sources, or maybe a one or two pager, like, we just need, we need to show ideas. We don't need, like, I think you're correct, we don't need to do all this extra digging down super deep, which will just be ignored anyways. Just show competent ideas as alternatives to be investigated. One of those that I don't think we've gotten away from me talking about, and some of these ideas may be a little more innovative than what is the norm and available now, but having ideas that are a little different, and funding sources from different places, not just one place, right? So multiple funding sources. We've talked about that DEQ. I would call it modernization of DEQ. Washington State's already gotten rid of it for vehicle emissions, because it's irrelevant, because all these electric cars are fishing cars. They don't, they all pass DEQ, so it's just this expensive, kind of bureaucratic red tape, outdated way to make sure that cars are clean. You could take all that, people can continue to pay that fee that could be bonded against, plus the cost savings of, or the diverting funds from all of the leased facilities and all of those things that takes the infrastructure for doing. The DEQ in the counties that do them, most counties, I think it's only the metro area in Jackson, I think, that even do DEQ. But maybe that could, bonding that would be cheaper, and you could fund just that part of maybe 205 over, or a portion of it, something. I mean, it's an idea, right? Like, you, we have, it's a creative idea that could be part of a funding source of an overall larger package, right? I just, and I'm just throwing that out as one of the ideas we've talked about. Maybe, and it would be a better use of, I think, public dollars than what is being used now. So I don't know, different things like that. So my big point after all, given that example, is where can we be innovative and look where other places are doing something a little bit different than what's being proposed, not just what we have available in front of us, so looking a little further?
Good.
I don't know, that's, you make me think of that when we look
Well, you know, there's been some ideas that generate some revenue or alternative ways of taking existing revenue streams and stopping that action and going and using those dollars elsewhere, but nothing that amounts to something that will fund the remaining part of the project, so.
How about an audit of 205?
So the, you know, the remaining piece is, I'm going to guess, is probably going to be to finish the project, which is the Tuolton River Bridge with the 205, and the remaining lanes is probably going to be four, five, $600 million or so estimated. I'm hearing that, hopefully on the smaller side. So, you know, I don't know, for those of you pay attention, I do this all the time, but a week before Thanksgiving, the price of gas, a gallon of gas on my street was averaged $4.39. And then, a couple days before Thanksgiving, a couple days afterwards, a few days before Thanksgiving, it shot up to $4.49, okay? And then, you know, on Monday, those same gas, it went down to $4.44, okay? And today, it's $4.39, where it started out two weeks ago. So it shifted over a dime, and people accept that. It's been, we all know that. Anyone's watching gasoline, the cost of a gallon of gasoline shifts all the time. And yet, a mere, possibly two cents, maybe, I don't know, I'm not here to do the math, but a mere two cents could possibly fund this project, get it back on track. Vehicle registration fee, I know that's painful for a lot, right? All these are painful, okay? But if you look at the lowest administrative cost means, that is probably the most responsible way of going about it. In tolling, you know, ODOT wants to claim that the administration cost to collect tolling might be 40 cents on every dollar. Well, the numbers we've seen thus far tell me, maybe closer to 70%
Oh, my God.
Okay, of every dollar. So 70 cents of every dollar, why, that's a burden. That's the greatest burden. I would think that it'd be responsible for us to point to the lowest-cost alternatives, right? That impact families and the state and budgets the least. And if it's two cents in just that scheme of what's taking place here in the last two weeks, I don't know. If it's vehicle registration fee, I don't know. But doing nothing, doing nothing is not meeting the, two of the pillars of ODOT's goals for transportation, safety and climate. Frankly, it's not making our life any easier here. So if that helps, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw, you're up.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. On Clackamas County Parks on 28 November, the Parks Advisory Board met. I'd like to thank all the members of the Clackamas County Parks Advisory Board and the members of the county staff for being creative and looking at ways to fund our parks in view of reduction in our county forest harvest, and also in reduction of the general fund out of the parks budget. In 2020, we lost a considerable amount of our timber, and that's managed by our county forester. And that timber was used to pay for county parks, and so that's going to be down in the future. And our county park staff is working to find ways to keep your 13 major parks operating. And one of the ways is to use a parking fee, so please understand that that's being done to make sure that our people have access to these beautiful parks. And you can go to clackamas.us/parks, get a parking pass for the year, or just go to that website and learn more about the beautiful parks that Clackamas County offers. On the gas tax and why Clackamas County residents need to take IP4 very seriously. Oregon's gas tax will be increasing by 5% come 1 January. Oregon's gas tax has gone up in 2018, 2020, 2022, and now in 2024. And that is due to our House Bill 2017 that passed seven years ago. And what are Oregonians getting for these increased gas taxes? Are you getting new lanes, new highways, or are you getting the threat of tolls? After four gas taxes, Oregon may be getting as many as 10 toll booths along I-5 and I-205, unless we all band together and fight it. Some say that the gas tax is not paying enough because of better fuel efficiency in modern vehicles. But House Bill 2017 also included a car sales tax, a bike tax, two auto fee increases, a truck tax increase, and a new payroll tax increase for transportation. And that's seven tax increases since 2017 that will raise over $5 billion in money for transportation. So I am more concerned about the family budgets of the people of Clackamas County and for small business bottom line. And so I urge everyone to get very serious. Go to votebeforetolls.org, download the IP4 petition, put it on your foyer table, and as your guests come to enjoy the holidays, have them sign that petition and get it turned in. This is very serious. On food insecurity, this is an issue that I find very troubling. The Oregon Food Bank, which is only one of our, of our facilities that actually distribute food to the needy. The Oregon Food Bank, between 1 July of 2022 and 30 June of this year, distributed 104 million pounds of food to needy families in Oregon. That is a considerable increase, some 11% increase over the year before. And again, part of this problem of food insecurity has to do with the cost of living in this state, the cost of housing, the cost of fuel. So as we draw near to the Christmas season, I would like to ask families of Clackamas County who have plenty to take a moment, maybe stop by and get some perishable foods and take it down to your local food pantry. I tell you, it's very much needed this time of year. Also, on another issue that will affect the pocketbooks of our families in Clackamas County is the Portland Water Bureau Filtration Plant, which was mentioned here this morning by Mr. Poole. Yes, it is in Multnomah County, but the water from that facility is used by people from one end of Clackamas County to the other, all the way to Tuolton. And if that facility is built, we can expect our water bills to go up at least four times. That's very significant. Like I mentioned this morning to Mr. Clark, one of our constituents contacted me earlier in the year and said that her water bill was $600 for two months. Well, times four is $2,400. That's for two months. She'll get six bills throughout the course of the year. So I urge people to go to the CPO website online and read about this plant and about alternatives to it, to learn more about how it's going to affect your budget, and getting involved with the fight against the Portland Water Bureau Filtration Plant. And with that, I'd like to thank all the people in Clackamas County for your time this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner West, you're up.
There's one common theme here, at least today, is how, like, just the working class and the middle class, at least in Oregon, is like becoming an endangered species. From utility bill costs to transportation costs to, let's see if we can make this turn up bleed mentality. It's been tough, man. And the cost of inflation, just go to the grocery store and you'll feel it real quick. We're just trying to feed your family at the grocery store. It is, our dollars just don't go as far as they used to, and we feel that every day. And I feel for those that have that, really, that really impacts their lives in a negative way. It's rough. You, Commissioner Shaw, just laid out, like, such a damning indictment on what You, Commissioner Shaw, just laid out, like, such a damning indictment on what is happening to the everyday person here. Like, it's not just tolling, he's, what, six, seven, how many taxes did you? Seven, seven taxes, all always going up, all always hitting us, nickel and diming us, man, it's, and I love the, just the easy observation that we are all asking, what are we getting for that, right? So it's, that is, that was a really powerful point you made today, thank you for making that. And I think maybe this board's position should be on top of like how we find alternative funding sources, even, you know, we just laid out a bunch of funding sources that never seems to be enough for the behemoth of government, is we, I think ODOT is just wildly unaccountable. I don't know who they really are accountable to. Some say the legislature, they don't seem to have a handle on it. Some say the governor, I don't know what branch, there's advisory board, I don't know, they are just massive and a multi-billion dollar agency that never has accountability and it seems to be like a runaway freight train. As we ask for all these funding sources, I want to know how much money ODOT actually has, I think a fiscal audit and time to call for a real audit of what's going on there. I know other legislators on both sides of the aisle are just like, what is happening with ODOT? Maybe as we make a stronger position, we should also join in on that and ask for some transparency and accountability with this agency. I don't know, it's just be one more thing that we're trying to do, but that might be something we want to consider. I'm going to ask this board to allow me to do something on the board's behalf today. I was approached by the group that we are all aware of that is working to try to reform and fix, kind of repeal, replace, Measure 110, and that's that Max Williams Group that we're all aware of. There is, on Monday, the Joint Committee on Addiction and Community Safety Response is holding one of their big hearings in Salem. They approached me and asked me to testify in that meeting. It's co-chaired by Chair Senator Lieber, Co-Chair Croft, and there's other members of the committee. I'll quickly go off like what my basic framework of my speech would be, and I'd love to be able to do on behalf of Clackamas County, not just me as an individual commissioner. I just basically would introduce myself, who I am, my credentials, my background, in that we support as a county substantive changes to Measure 110, and I could say that on behalf of Clackamas County. And I want to talk about, and we've talked about this too, and some of the big bullet points I will hit is that voluntary, involuntary, involuntary treatment isn't working, make possessions of lethal drugs like fentanyl and meth a misdemeanor crime, so increase penalties for drug dealing and public use so we can help compel people to treatment is one of my points, give law enforcement the tools to steer addicts towards mandatory treatment, away from jail, prioritizing diversion programs, and putting drug users on a path to recovery, continuing to fund Measure 110. We want the funding source, but we want more expedited creation of recovery treatment facilities and recovery oriented systems of care. And then finally, our beloved state can't wait any longer to see these changes, people are dying every day, we see about 100 people die a month because of what's going on in the metro area, and kind of urge them to take substantive changes and not nibble around the edges. I only have like two or three minutes, so that would probably take it all up, but I would like to do this on behalf of this board, so I would need your guys' thumbs up to do that, but I think it's a little more powerful than just me doing it alone. But I cleared my schedule on Monday to do this, and I'm willing to take any feedback or anything what you guys think on it.
I think you need to make a very more powerful statements on the recriminalization of drugs. What you said, it almost gives them permission to continue, so I think your language needs to be stronger on that from this board. When we referred the measure, the advisory vote for May, we took a very strong position on it, and your position, I believe you're going to, and the entire board, from what I have heard, is that we need to stop the flow of illegal drugs somehow. You can have all the money in the world, as you know, for treatment, and it's not going to do any good because the addiction problem has skyrocketed like this and government's reaction still will be behind.
Totally right.
Yes, I do agree.
You know I can go stronger, Chair, I was just trying to be.
Yeah, well, and we have all agreed on our recovery method, you know, that's optimal.
Yeah.
That's very optimal. And in my commissioner comments, I have some comments I'd like to make on that. Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, I wish I had something more in writing and some ample time to consider it. I don't, I didn't hear a lot that I disagreed with, but at the same token is the approach when we speak about this, and again, no reflection on anyone on the dais here today, but, you know, when I listen to what's happening in the region or the state on this conversation, people are saying, the people that are saying, you know, repeal 110, and that's being twisted into, oh, that means stop funding for treatment and so forth. Well, your words, you kind of covered that by saying, you know, maintain the funding, but there's all these details and nuances that a position paper might, and not a speech, but a position paper might help articulate what it is we don't like about 110, what it is that we do like about some of the direction of funding for treatment is valuable, right? So, you know, I think safe harbor absent some more detail, and you only have two or three minutes, and that's not, that's not very good, is, you know, just speak from your mind and speak for yourself and use your best judgment, but, you know, if I'm going to get behind something, not a big deal, but I'm going to get behind something because of all the stuff, some of it rhetoric, that's out there spinning around, again, nothing directed towards anyone here on the dais, but it's being politicized. And I'm not sure everyone understands, like anything else we deal with, that everyone understands all the nuances and details, but I do think, you know, the decriminalizing aspect of 110, I don't support. I do support the funding, which was intended, by the way, way before 110, that the marijuana monies were to be directed to, so that's a no-brainer, right?
Correct.
For treatment, all for the treatment, but to decriminalize that and how that has permeated the mindset of a lot of people has led to the exploitation of marketing of fentanyl and other drugs, so it's like a free-for-all, and that part, I think, is really putting our community at risk.
You talked about a position paper, and I wholeheartedly agree on that. Commissioner Schrader and I have been working on a position paper, and we currently have a two-pager, are you aware of that? It was supposed to have been presented, we were asked to present this at an Association of Oregon Counties, and there was a draft written, and we changed some language on that to make it more palpable. I'm not saying that that is represented on this entire board. Max Williams asked us to present an AOC, and it really wasn't in good form. Then I hear he's going to present an AOC in January, so we're not sure where that is. If you want to get that position paper, it's nothing that's controversial, it's nothing that we haven't said before, but I think Emily has a copy of that. Now, what was really good about that position paper, there was an attachment on it from the League of Oregon Cities, the Sheriff's Associations, the Chiefs of Police, and what was District Attorneys Association of Oregon, and they outlined about 10 different points. You're not going to have time for that.
Well, these are the big, with my point, four points that I laid out, these bullet points, kind of encompass all of those policy positions, coming AOC, all those organizations you just mentioned, AOC, LOC, the Max Williams Group, the DAs, all of that.
Just be, just be strong that, you know, this isn't working, we need a sea change. I see change on this, it's only, I'm sure you'll do fine.
And I would love, just because we've given Commissioner some leeway, trust and bandwidth on this board before, like Paul with Parks or Transportation, we don't always know exactly what, but we trust that we are in the same vibe with him and there's not a lot of daylight, so we say, go forth and do on behalf of the board. I'd like a little bit of trust to do the same in this speech on Monday, I don't want to say I speak for the board if I do not speak for the board and just for myself, but that's why I'm specifically asking just for your guys' trust to allow me to do that if I have the majority today, to say I can do it.
I have, I think you'll be fine on that. Commissioner Shaw.
Yeah, I typically, when commissioners give a speech, unless that speech is vetted in detail by the board, we only speak as one commissioner, so that's important to do that. I certainly think you'll do a great job, but again, we can only speak on, when we give a speech, say that, we say this on behalf of the board is if it's been actually vetted by the board.
In a position paper, for instance.
Yes, exactly, in detail.
But he's up against the clock on this, and you can go ahead and speak.
Yeah, and I understand that, I don't disagree, just like I was brought, this is my attention at the last minute, this group said, Ben, we'd like you to be, want to come and speak with this group. I cleared my schedule to do it and jumped through hoops, and then I had just till today to, hey, here's the framework that I will stick to, can I have trust to do this? I do think it just has a little more punch if I, and I'll do it either way, but I'm just, I'm asking for a little bit of grace in the last second here for me to be able to articulate this, which I think I've been able to prove in the last 11 months that I am competent on this issue.
And nobody's doubting your competence.
And I understand, and so I'm just, I don't know, you guys can tell me, no, Ben, speak for yourself, but that's my ask today.
Speak for yourself, that's the safest, always. I'm Clackamas County Commissioner, speaking on Measure 110, and this is my experience. But they don't know where you're coming from, they already know that we've taken positions on this, yeah. You're not, I doubt if they will ask you a single question, because I think it's going to be packed. You're not going to have time, based on my experience, for questions on that, so. Okay. Thank you. My time, I guess, to speak on some things. Regarding the tolling issue, I submitted an op-ed piece that was published by the Oregonian and the Pamplin Media, and in that I made what I thought was a good statement, and that is, there's, and the tolling issue, there's no guarantee that even if tolls are collected in Clackamas County, they will be spent in Clackamas County. And that's the danger that we face as we go ahead and thinking we're going to approve or single out any other additional monies to fix our roads. I do not believe it's incumbent upon us to devise methods to either increase taxes to pay for toll, to pay for the roads without being fully vetted. I am looking forward to the policy session on transportation funding, I think that's important for us, I think we can come away at least with a couple nuggets that we can support on that. But even in that, for instance, your DEQ idea or the ODOT audit, you know, those are golden, those are golden, whether they happen or not, whether they'll produce anything that we, tangible spending money in Clackamas County is up for debate. That is the issue, and we do need to push the legislature to start thinking about some other things, and thank you for bringing those up. Have you read, the governor's been making news a lot with her priorities for the special session, and it's housing, and it's daycare, it's workforce daycare, but she never mentions anything about Measure 110 or tolling. She's silent on that, and those are some of the greatest economic and social problems facing the state of Oregon. And she thinks by more housing, we can put homeless people in housing, and I keep saying we need to look at the causation of homelessness, why are they homeless to begin with, and look at that, and I never hear her say that. When I talk to her, she's, oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. She never says that. Additionally, too, she wants hundreds of millions of dollars for housing, where are we going to put it without any more land that's buildable? I want affordable housing for people who are wanting to buy their first house or maybe sell this house and retire to a smaller place, you know, we all are at these certain phases in life, and it's just very problematic. Also on that joint transportation commission that Commissioner Savas mentioned, there's a change in leadership on that, I'm sure you saw that, Paul. The assigned chairs on that have been replaced by other people, and we discussed that at the mayors and chair meeting I had this week, and nobody seems to know why, they've been substituted with more senior members of the legislature, which I thought was interesting. And during the mayors and chairs meeting, I think we had 12 or 14 mayors this week on it, we discussed the library issue, and as I mentioned earlier this week, the mayors were all in agreement on the library issue, we had a great discussion, and I also leave it open up at the end for the good of the order, any topic that the mayor wants to bring up, they certainly can, as predictable, there's a couple mayors that throw zingers at Clackamas County because they think that they're, it's going to do some good and it doesn't. And, you know, just bring it, bring it, we'll have a discussion on whatever you want to Regarding the ABCs, the appointed boards and commissions in Clackamas County, I've been attending a lot of public events in the evening and on weekends, and I have people come up to me saying, yeah, I really want to serve on this, so what I'm seeing is people are really anxious to serve on these, how do I do it, how do I do it, what's up next? I really don't know because I don't keep track, it's, we have about 40 of them, we always want good qualified people, and I encourage people to do that. People, I was at an event the other night I spoke at, and he says, well, we have about 40, and he says, well, where do I find it? And I directed him to the link, but I was very encouraged about people wanting to come forward and serve for Clackamas County, he says, yes, we do need you. I see no other business before this commission. Thank you all for your comments, we are adjourned.